Bear with me tonight. I've lost my breath, my voice. But good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Nacogdoches Independent School. Can you hear me? Let the record show that our quorum of board members is present and that notice has been given, has been legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. All board members are present and please remember that items do not have to be taken in the order shown on the agenda. And please join us in turning off your cell phones or switching them to the silent mode. With that, I'm going to turn to Reverend Irvin. He's going to do the invocation tonight. May we pray. Father, we are so thankful that you've granted us the opportunity to serve this district and this community in a time such as this. And we pray that you would guide us as we go throughout this evening and make decisions. We pray that you would order our steps. We pray that you would bless this district. We pray for our students and our faculty and our staff. To you be the glory and honor. And it's in the name of Christ our Lord we pray. Amen. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Harshbarger for pledges to the flag.
Good evening, President Green, board members, and Mrs. Doughty. Happy holidays from TJR. We have a portion of our GT program here today to help lead us in the pledges. I'm going to turn it over to Erin McGee, our GT coordinator.
Good evening. I'm Erin McGee and I've brought with me two of our friends and they would like to introduce themselves.
Rowan McGee.
Fourth grade.
Haley Rose, fourth grade.
And now Rowan McGee will lead us in the pledges.
Please salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas pledge. Salute pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, wide and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to move a few items on the agenda in interest of time and due to a conflict with Ms. Korszewski's schedule. We are now going to get a presentation from Ms. Korszewski on, we're going to move into 6B, consideration of superintendent vacancy and naming of lone finalist. And we will replace 6B. We will move public comments to where 6B normally is. We'll put 6B, I mean 2, will be at where 6B is.
Thank you, Mr. Green, Ms. Doughty, members of the board. I was asked to come tonight to speak to you on your agenda item 6B, consideration of superintendent vacancy and naming of lone finalist, which basically is an overview of the superintendent hiring process and to give you an opportunity to ask procedural questions that might be of additional benefit as you continue to work through this all-important task. Do I use this as my clicker? There we go. Okay. The first slide basically is a capsulation of the options that any school board has when it is making a decision on replacing an outgoing superintendent. Your three options in a nutshell are you either hire a search firm to assist you with that process, you conduct the search yourself as a board, or you assign an existing employee to the position of superintendent. And so I'm going to go over with you a little highlights on each one of those options and identify the pros and cons, which I think will hopefully help you to continue to formulate questions and identify what of the three options are best for you. There are two policies that I've shared with you in your handout tonight that are applicable. And actually, it's really just a very short portion of the first policy, which is DC Legal. DC Legal is the overview of your employment practices in general. And there's just one small section that deals with posting of vacancies. And then you'll see that language also reiterated in policy BJB Legal, which also deals with vacancies of superintendents and posting obligations, but is unique only to superintendencies. And so what I've done for you on this slide is basically just highlight for you in one sentence what those policies tell you, which is that before you make any kind of decision to ultimately hire a certified employee or someone that is licensed, then by statute, you must post that vacancy, not externally for the world to see, but rather internally on your own website or on a bulletin board here at the administration office and on campus. The intent is so that existing employees in the district who might be qualified for those positions, whether they be teachers or principals or counselors or librarians or whatnot, be aware that you have that opening and that they have the opportunity to at least for 10 days express whatever interest they might have in filling that vacancy. And so under all three of these options, whether you hire a search firm, whether the board conducts the search, or whether you assign an existing employee ultimately to the position of superintendent, you would have to comply with the posting requirements that would obligate you to post at least 10 school days before you ultimately hired a superintendent. So let's go through each one of these options. Hiring a search firm is probably the most popular of the three items. I know this is the selection that the Nacogdoches School Board has made probably the past two, if not three times that it's hired a superintendent. Search firms, for the most part, exist of retired superintendents and other school district employees from all around the state. They refer to themselves as consultants for the most part. And the process looks quite a bit like this. Now, it may deviate a little depending upon the firm and the timelines that you have, but I've just kind of put here a little outline together for those of you who aren't maybe as experienced with this process as some of the others who sit on the board. The board first invites proposals from the search firm. So you would have maybe a handful that you might want to send a letter to and invite their submission of a proposal to work with the board. The board would then collect and place on the agenda consideration of those proposals. You could have someone from the search firm come speak to you if you wanted, or you could consider those just simply by virtue of the written proposal that was presented. The firm would then be hired by the board again under a properly posted agenda. One of the first things that these search firms require of school boards is that each member sign an oath of confidentiality. The requirement there is so that each board member understands that the process only works so long as the names of the candidates are maintained confidential. And so the search firms need to know that they have your, actually assurance that when they share candidate information with you, that you will not be discussing that publicly because if it gets back to the candidate's existing employer, then you're going to lose an otherwise potentially good candidate. And so they're going to require you to sign that oath of confidentiality. Those firms then usually set up several town hall meetings. Again, depending upon the size of the school district, they'll come in and they'll go to your different campuses during evenings. They'll talk to the community members and they'll talk to you as a board and they'll figure out what the ideal candidate might look like based upon the unique needs of your district. And they will formulate what they refer to as a profile. And once they formulate that profile, they'll bring that to you and you will all come to an agreement on what that profile looks like. And they'll actually, you know, print it up and put it together in a nice little bulletin. They attach that to the formal job posting and the job gets posted publicly. Usually, the best place to post is not only through the search firm's own website, but also through texasisd.com, which is a website that if you're not familiar with it, posts superintendent vacancies on a daily basis. And so they'll post there and then they'll also post internally with your own HR office on the district's website as well. Then the work begins. And those individuals who are consultants with these search firms, they begin actually recruiting candidates. Of course, they're going to accept any applications that come into them, but they're also going to kind of look through their rolodex of people that they've worked with over the years or that whom they think might have a skill set that would be unique and desirable to the district. And they will recruit those individuals and hopefully be able to encourage them to apply. The resumes then are actually vetted by the search firm. They don't bring every single resume to you, but rather they will vet them and they'll narrow the pool of candidates down to those they feel like would be valuable for you to actually interview. And the board will schedule those interviews and interview those handful of candidates. And with the assistance of the search firm and their recommendations, the board will then make a decision with regards to whether or not it believes that there is in fact a potential superintendent candidate in that pool of those who were interviewed. If they find that to be the case, then they will actually post and identify what's referred to as a lone finalist for the position of superintendent. The lone finalist language actually comes from the Public Information Act because the TPIA says that if someone were to request the identity of every single applicant who's applied for a vacancy of a superintendent position under the Public Information Act, we get to keep that information confidential until such time as the board identifies a quote unquote lone finalist. And then that lone finalist's name is out there and must be posted and displayed for a 21-day period before the lone finalist could actually be hired. During that 21-day period is the time because of course, the cat's out of the bag as to the fact that this person applied, is interested in the job, and the board and that individual feel like that this might be a good marriage, so to speak. So during that 21-day period, when that name is out there, then that's when the board can investigate a little further the individual's qualifications, receive information from the community here, possibly visit the community where that candidate is from. And you spend that 21-day period getting comfortable with whether or not this in fact will or will not be a good fit. Once that 21 days, and it is calendar days, expires, that's when the board can hire that lone finalist or not. You see, I put that in parentheses, or not. Maybe that 21-day period brought forth information that one or both parties felt like it's not going to be as good of a fit as we thought. And so you go back and you begin the process again. So what are some of the pros and the cons of hiring a search firm? The pros are, of course, as I mentioned, the firm members are actually retired superintendents or other administrators, folks that are real close to the world of education and can readily spot for you and identify what your issues are. They also have that wonderful pool of resources and former colleagues and so forth, so they have the ability to recruit for you. So that's also a positive. And they do all the work, which means that for the most part, the number of board meetings, the number of times you all have to come together for this is minimal in compared to the work that they are doing behind the scenes. That guarantee of confidentiality is probably one of the biggest pros, that you're going to attract a much larger pool of candidates by virtue of those aspiring superintendents or individuals who might be interested if they feel like, okay, I'm going through a search firm, then I know that my name is not going to get out. And so you're going to attract far more individuals, at least theoretically, than you might otherwise. The cons, of course, is it's costly. You know, I see some searches cost as much as $10,000 if not $15,000 from start to finish when you consider travel costs and things of that nature. And then time to an extent. They put together a pretty extensive calendar to do it right, to really be able to get into the district and spend the time that they'd like. And so it can take sometimes as much as three to four months to get a superintendent in there. So depending upon what your posture is in your district at the time, you may or may not have that kind of time to devote to the process. So those are just some quick pros and cons. The second option is the board itself conducts the search. It's fairly similar, other than the fact that the board itself will devise the profile. You can do that individually alone. You can do that through town hall meetings as well, but you decide your own process. The job still is again posted. We typically recommend the same places. Again, you won't have the benefit of posting through a consulting firm's website, but you can still post through texasisd.com and certainly you would post with the district's website. Resumes are going to be received and vetted by the board, so that's additional meeting time that have to be, that will be necessary. The board will then narrow the candidates again as to who they want to interview. And sometimes this process, this vetting and this narrowing can take several specially called board meetings to get that process complete. The board then interviews the candidates and that process is pretty similar to when you have a search. And then the board identifies a lone finalist. And then the board identifies a lone finalist and offers a position to that lone finalist after the expiration of 21 days or not. Again, that same 21-day period is required for the express purpose of being able to conduct a little bit deeper and more extensive of an investigation and for you to be able to determine what the needs of the district are and receive input and feedback from your community and be able to share with your community the qualifications of this person that you feel would be a wonderful fit for your community. The pros and cons of this process. The pros, of course, is you save all the money that you would be spending with a search firm. Another pro is that you design and develop your own calendar. And so sometimes, when you don't have an extensive period of time to devote to it, you can get a superintendent's search conducted yourself a little bit quicker or sooner than you might in going through a search firm. The cons, of course, is that lack of a guarantee of confidentiality, or at least the perception by your prospective candidates is that, hey, if I apply for this job, I'm risking seven potential individuals who I've never met before could release my name and then it would get out to my existing employer and potentially impact my current employment situation. And so that's one of the biggest cons, I think, is that you do... The pool of candidates is much smaller when you go with a board search as opposed to a search firm. You also lose that opportunity to tap into resources that are provided by a search firm due to the relationships that those consultants have with former educators. And then I think the biggest con really is just it's extremely time-consuming. You can tighten it and get it done sooner, maybe, but it does require a lot of meetings. So it's a huge time commitment for the board to conduct the search itself. Now, the third option is to always assign from within. Some districts have that opportunity and option. Some districts don't because they simply don't have anyone in their district who has the qualifications for superintendent. So that's the first thing the board does after it develops its profile, is to look inside and determine, do we have candidates that we think would be suitable to fill the position of superintendent based upon their certification and their qualifications for the position? If the answer to that is in the affirmative, typically what the board does is they appoint that person first as an interim superintendent. In other words, they reassign from their existing position into the position of superintendent, but only on an interim basis. Why you say interim? Well, for a lot of different reasons. It could be because that person isn't interested in a full-time superintendency. Or it could be because the board is simply wanting to be able to evaluate that person for a particular period of time to see if, in fact, they do have the ability to lead the district at the highest level of superintendent. So the board typically puts the existing employee in the position of interim superintendent and then a significant, or a period of time passes where they evaluate that person's performance to determine whether or not they are suitable for the position of superintendent. The board then notifies the individual of their interest to move them into the position of superintendent. They would identify as a lone finalist on their board agenda and post notice on their school district's website. They can do those two things timely. They can do one before the other. But the bottom line, again, is that you cannot hire this person as a permanent superintendent until such time as 21 calendar days have passed from actually naming them as lone finalists and 10 school days have passed where you've posted internally on your district's website your interest in identifying them or the fact that you have this vacancy and you have this interest in putting this individual candidate into the position of superintendent. So whether or not you post first, identify the lone finalist second, or vice versa, you simply have to comply with those timelines before you hire the individual in the position of superintendent. Now, I didn't do pros and cons on the assign from within provision because, for the most part, we've addressed pros and cons with the two others, whether you go inside or whether you go outside. And I think, for the most part, doing the search yourself, those pros and cons are very similar to assigning from within. What questions might you have generally about the process?
This may not mean necessarily much a process question, but I'm curious. Would you say, could you give us a range on what it costs to hire an outside firm if that was the direction we were interested in going?
Yes. Typically, what I've seen is that it's around a $10,000 figure. And depending upon the travel, in other words, how far away is this firm that you're employing and how often are they driving to Nacogdoches for these meetings, hotel stays, et cetera, that can increase the cost. But I've also seen, over the years, that these firms are willing to negotiate. So it's not something that's necessarily set in stone and certainly you can carve out whatever tasks, duties, and responsibilities might be best for you to lower the cost.
Would you say the vast majority of districts go that route?
I would say probably the vast majority go the route of a search firm. But it's not uncommon to see the other as well. I mean, it really depends on the individual needs of the district, maybe the luck that they've had with search firms in the past, maybe the fact that they may feel like they've already heard through the grapevine that there's interest and they already have an idea of some suitable candidates, whether it's either internally or it's, you know, in the area. And so it's really kind of all across the board what you see.
Sorry, guys. One more question and I'll...
Sure.
I know that, you know, being kind of new to the educational environment, I've heard that there are better times and worse times to try to start a search or begin the process. Is there any truth to that or is that just kind of what you'd call urban myth?
I think from the perspective of wanting the superintendent hired in time for the budget process, then the farther back from that date you go, the better. In other words, you wouldn't want to wait to begin the process until late spring. You would want to begin the process as early as possible so that that superintendent would be able to finish out their year at their existing district if required and still be available to start here in time to begin the budget process in late May, early June.
And I'm assuming we could always start with one method and transpire to the next if we wanted to...
Absolutely.
Consider internal candidates or maybe open it up for an internal search, but if we're not happy with the applicant pool...
There is absolutely no rule that restricts how long you can keep a candidate as an interim. They simply have to have the appropriate qualifications and certification to fill the position of superintendent.
Thank you.
What other questions might we have? And I know we've talked about some of this in the past and I wanted to kind of put it all together and give an overview and provide opportunities for any additional questions now that you've had some time to process all of it.
I'll just make a comment that some of the trainings we go to for our credits and things, they have these types of presentations also. And so I know some of us have been to some of those and are familiar with some of this and these options. And I take it you've seen success on all three options?
Yes, I have.
Depends on the specific...
Absolutely.
Mr. Ditt, I want to say, now that you say that, you mentioned that you went to a workshop on that. Did they have any additional information that you...
I've got some of the same information in this type of form. It may be tweaked a little bit, but it's the general... It's a little more extensive, but that's okay. That's what it was for. And it was actually one of the groups that does the searches. And so I do have copies of that.
Well, this is helpful. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No more questions? Thank you. With that, the board will now go into, conduct an executive session to discuss the items posted on the agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act as allowed by Texas Government's Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129, Region 7. We're not going to be long, so... But Kelly is going to... Again, we need to have her here for our executive session and then we'll come out pretty quick. We are journeying at 5:25.